Can you hear us now, out in the audience, or in the alcohol? Yes.
Yep, I'll be here now.
So on the pool is, um, what this seventy-five thousand will do is, the council agreed that the other pool has been at the end of its life. And we'll try and limp through at least two years, and in the meantime, try and figure out the community involvement of the pool. I think the first step is a master plan, and these are experts in three different types of pool, uh, planning. And so I think it, even though it's, it's a big amount, I think it's worth investigating and going forward with it.
Yeah.
Um, also, the new pool location would be in the back of the old grade school. And right now, the city does not own that property, but we expect to get it back in two thousand twenty-six.
Oh, you think, you say that one more time?
We do not own the property of the school right now. The, the port environmental century does while they have it.
Okay.
So we, the city anticipates getting that property back in two thousand twenty-six, if not the end of.
So do you think that's, that's proposed location?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we would not put it back in the other way. There's too many issues with, um, ADA access, expanding the pool. It's in a rock assault shelf, and, um.
Some of the pool property too, that one just there.
Correct, yeah. We have a lease with the school. Plus, we have two more years of a lease for here. So part of, I think, the communication project, the strategy for the new pool is, A, working with these people to get a master plan and getting some figures. Two is, we're gonna have to start a conversation with you guys to see if we're going to get some operation funds. We have two years left at seventy thousand, and at that point, and I also think too, the community involvement. Um, one of my staff brought this up. We need to figure out, all the community wants it, we gotta figure out how bad they want it, if they're gonna pay for it.
Absolutely.
And part of it is gonna be, I think, a bond to build it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the city has, has always had no intention of making this another one of our, uh, park projects that is a money loser. So, um, we'll see how it goes with the public and with the county.
Okay.
So, second thing is, um, on your, was County Wild Child Care Endowment. I'm hoping that is high priority when you go into it. The, uh, it's an important part of our strategic plan, our envisioning, and it's also an important part of infrastructure for the county. This third one is, of course, housing. It always rises to the top. I want the county to know that I might be coming in for another, uh, capital improvement project. I have applied for a hundred thousand dollar grant with the state of Business Oregon to get a, um, on the fairway housing, which is north of the golf course, which we will tour this afternoon, Commissioner Wilkins. Um, what that hundred thousand hopefully will get us is survey, uh, make it into a subdivision through the planning department. And also too, is to get the, uh, a start on the engineering of phase one of that.
Have you talked to R. Three, um, McGreen?
I have not talked to him yet. Right now, I have got an email that I'm meeting with someone that does middle housing, uh, through Nate Stice. He connected me with him. I also got another email this morning about, um, the state childcare division actually has housing in their plan, because it is proven that if you have safe, secure housing in childcare, um, it helps the child learn better. So that's another, also thing too. So I've also, I've had discussions with Representative Smith, Senator Nash, and LOC. And actually, I have a connection with AOC that I've also talked to too.
Right.
Anyway, I just wanna make sure that the priorities that are.
Pool and down in housing, yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else for public comment? Come on up, Mr. McGuire?
So, being an F purple, I can't hear. I have a letter to give each one of you, would mind seeing it?
And then I'll just have you state your name and.
Okay, Rod McGuire, Oregon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have this, do it wrong?
That's okay.
I'm a little nervous too.
Take a breath.
Um, I'm here to clarify any things about the Woolery, I represent the Woolery. And at the last meeting, it was rumored that we were trying to move the Woolery to Goldendale. I've never even been to a chamber meeting in Goldendale. So I wanted to clear that up. Uh, I'm also working with Christine Monahan with the Kelly Group. I'm meeting with her next week. I've been working with a gal named Rebecca Berry with Roundhouse Foundation Grant Programs Director. So I'm working with her. Now, the Woolery's still moving forward, and I just wanted to clear up any misinformation that was out there. And I have reason for the letter. I didn't wanna mention names.
Right.
So is there any questions I can answer?
So, just for clarification, and I talked to you about it, I did call, or I did talk to the Goldendale Chamber of Commerce, and they assured me that you were only a member, had been for ten years, and it was for, um, just for exposure.
Yeah, mm-hmm. We're a member of the Hepner Chamber, Goldendale Boardman, of course Frontier. Uh, we're, all the surrounding chambers we're a member of, but I've never talked to, I've never been to a chamber meeting in Goldendale.
All right.
So I just wanted to clear that up. It was kinda upsetting to me.
Well, yeah, I think that we, as a county court, need to be cognizant, aware of, um, that we need. When, when an entity is mentioned to us, um, we need to be sure that the person has approached that entity before they're telling us about, telling us about what's going on. You see what I mean? So that communication is direct, and that dispels rumors, and, okay?
I should come to Moore County Court, but a lot of times, my job doesn't allow me, and.
Right.
Well, hindsight, like I say, uh, reaching out to communicate, could clear it up real quick too. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and, and we, we were confused about the Kelly Group in the beginning, and so we're glad to be starting, start that process. But it was very confusing to us, and it was misrepresented to us.
Okay.
Uh, telling us that we had to go to all these courses and.
Okay.
And stuff, so we got that kinda cleared up. But I'm meeting Christine on the eighth, and I'm happy to do that. So I just wanted to clear up anything.
This, this is from you, Rod?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna let you know what position we get put in with that.
Okay, this is all public record.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll make sure.
Thanks, Rod. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, um, anyone else virtually who is wanting to comment? Okay, we have some written correspondence. Let's see, um. We just go into the, uh, written correspondence. We received correspondence from, um, citizen Les Ror concerned about an item on the agenda. I'm gonna summarize the letter. Um, he was concerned about the Greater Idaho discussion. Basically, if, if we were to do anything as far as action, he asked that that be postponed to the next county court meeting in order for there to be an, um, added good opportunity for concerned citizens so that, um, they can have a chance to review any documents at all. So I, um, spoke with him on the phone. I assured him that no, no action would be taken. That's not what the agenda item is on the agenda under three point six is just a discussion item. So, um, I think he's, he's clear on that, okay? Um, we also have a special projects final report for the, um, Gillum County four-H International Club, who just came back from a trip in Costa Rica, so. And we also have two, oh, excuse me, we have the Waste Management Tenage Report, and then we'll go back to item three point two, Amy Nation Juvenile Prevention Department.
Hello.
Morning.
Thank you.
Morning.
Do you want me to start with my update?
So, okay, for clarification, um, Amy is going to give her update, and then we will cover, um, the item that she is going to be discussing as well on the agenda, which is the Youth Experience Program for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Um, so I just took some notes on, kind of, some of the stuff I have going on in my office right now. Um, I'm not on the Norcore Board, but, um, I am part of the Juvenile Director Oversight Committee that oversees the juvenile detention side. So I also attend the board meetings. Um, right now with the board, they're looking at hiring a consultant, um, to see where both sides of Norcore can save some money, um, and maybe do things a little more efficiently. The consultant that was chosen, um, we just actually got some sad news yesterday that her son has some health issues, so they're gonna go out and offer it to somebody else, so. Um, and the Oversight Committee, uh, we are paused hiring a new detention manager until July one because of budget. So staff, um, has been working to fill in the gaps right now. Dylan, our manager in the back, has been working, um, to oversee the, the line staff. Um, Nicole's been helping, she's, and Molly goes in, uh, Amber, Robbie and I are all available to help out with questions as well. And then Barb, who's our front office person, has been helping out a lot. Um, we're looking at purchasing a new X-ray body scanner, um, on the juvenile side. Uh, there have been, it's not, what am I looking for? It's less invasive for our youth. We don't do body searches on our youth. Um, contraband has been brought in in the past. A body scanner would be a, um, non-invasive way to be able to look at the youth that are coming in. Uh, we got a donation from the Central Eastern Oregon Juvenile Justice Consortium. They had some money that they needed to spend, so they're giving two hundred thousand dollars to the detention to purchase the body scanner. So we're going out for bids right now for that.
I think it's like the adult one too, isn't it, the same?
Yep, yep. Robbie was at the, what is it, Gary, the Shirts? Yeah, the Western State Shirts Association, Robbie went to that. She's the Hood River Juvenile Director, and she met with some of the providers there who sell the body scanners, and so she brought us back the information, and then Nicole's gonna go out for quotes for that. So, um, we meet actually this afternoon, so hopefully we'll have some more information on that, but that'll be nice to, to add. And it looks like we have the funding for it, so that would be good as well. Um, the Oregon Directors Association, which is made up of all the counties in the state, we are meeting in Salem tomorrow. Um, I don't know if you guys have heard, but the Oregon Youth Authority is having some issues in the media right now with, um, some pretty serious allegations that have happened at McLaren, um, some sex abuse allegations. Um, our, uh, the Professional Standards Office with Oregon Youth Authority is really behind on complaints made by youth and investigating those complaints. Um, where that ties in with the juvenile directors is, some of our funding is passed through, um, through OIA. An example is my juvenile crime prevention grant, um, comes through that, OIA. We just wanna meet and get on the same page on how we wanna address the situation that's going on with the Oregon Youth Authority to make sure that we're also protected, that our funding is protected, um, and that our youth are protected, because they all start at our county before they go to Oregon Youth Authority. So, um, we're gonna meet just to brainstorm what we wanna do about what's going on with Oregon Youth Authority right now. Um, my caseload right now is pretty low. I've got two delinquency cases, two dependency cases. Um, I'm a part of various committees. Um, the school, Michelle Gere started a new sexual abuse incident response committee that I'm a part of. Um, what this is, is when the school has some concerning behavior with kids, and they need some outside, just consultation, um, they go to this committee. We did training for it. Um, the school ultimately still makes decisions whether it rises to like a law enforcement level or whether, you know, they wanna work with the youth through safety planning or things like that. So I'm on that committee. Um, I'm also on the COJAC, which is our Central Region Juvenile Directors Budget Committee. We've met a couple times already. Um, I'm on MDT. I'm on the Community Counseling Advisory Board. Um, I'm also on the Board of Directors, but I don't do that as part of my work. I do that on my own time. Um, and then Safe Kids Regional Family Advisory Team, just some various other committees that I sit on. Um, Girl Circle is going strong in Arlington. Uh, I have the largest group. It grows every year, which I love. I have nine this year in the Girl Circle group, um, ranging from seventh grade all the way up to seniors. And our topic this time is, uh, social media use, which has been really good. And, um, the girls have offered a lot of, a lot of, um, insight on social media that even I wasn't aware of, so it's been really good. And then I'm busy getting ready for the summer work program. Um, I've emailed businesses. Uh, we're a little low on businesses in Arlington, but, um, actually, an update. I reached out. I just called some businesses that haven't historically participated. I've made a note, I don't know what I should have made out, but, um, more businesses have got on board this summer. The grocery store is going to, um, employ youth. The hotel is, there's just an employee, one or two youth. Um, the library is a possibility. They had a grant from the college last year. They're not sure if they're gonna get that same, so that funded. They had a, a youth there last year, but the grant they got from Columbia Gorge Community College paid for that youth. But if they don't get that grant again, then they're gonna go through this program. And the ports did not participate this year, but they wanna participate, or they didn't participate last year. They wanna participate this year, but the caveat is, it has to be youth over sixteen, because they have to be able to operate lawnmower, and weed eater, and by bully laws, you can't do that under sixty. So we'll see what we get there. Um, I did speak with youth in Arlington yesterday. Handed out applications, um, asked them to return them to me by May eighth. So I met with them, and then I'm scheduled to meet in Condon with the kids here on April ninth, I believe, so.
Has the City of Arlington participated previously?
They have a, um, supervision.
Yeah.
They struggle with. Um, I am gonna speak with Shanna and see if they're interested this year. Um, I've been playing phone tag with her, so we'll see.
Muches gracias.
Yeah, we'll see. But I mean, it sounds like a, you know, a few more, you know, possibly four more new ones in Arlington, and then two new ones jumped on in Condon, two, two boys wants a youth this summer, and, um. Oh, there's a in-home daycare that is interested in having some help with like lunch and cleanup and.
In Condon?
Uh-huh, in Condon, so. So we're getting some more, which will be good, because last year I wasn't able to, I had more youth apply than I had jobs for them. So hopefully, we'll close that gap this year.
Good. And how many positions do we, do we fund out of that?
Last year, I think, we had seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah. Eleven, eleven were left out, or.
Yeah, 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 correct.
That's what I'm, yeah.
So, you know, quite a few. I mean, there's not, I did rewrite, um. My juvenile crime prevention grant is for the biennium, and it was time to redo the grant this, for the next biennium. And I requested that the entire amount go towards the summer work program, and that would be thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars a year that we could invest in the summer work program. So, um, I don't think there's really gonna, I think we have enough job slots to fit all the kids who apply. I don't think we're gonna have to turn any away for funding issues. I think we'll be okay.
What about the OIC program?
That, we, I just, um, I visited with Judge Patino about expanding it. Right now, it covers the youth who work at both child care, so Arlington Childcare and the Early Learning Center. And they allowed me to, uh, do a request to alter the grant, and we can also employ youth at the.
Soil and Water.
Thank you.
Street.
SWCD, um, so potentially two youth will be working at the SWCD through the OIC grant as well. And that also just got redone for the next biennium. Funding was cut. They had a lot of money during COVID and extra money from legislation. They're not anticipating that this year. And off the top of my head, I, I wanna say it's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars a year, where it was twice that, if not more, in last biennium. So, um, it will be lower, however, it can only be used for that small pot, and we won't, we'll have plenty of money to cover the child cares and the SWCD.
Okay.
So.
Right.
I don't anticipate any issues financially there either, or having to come to the county for money to fund the youth who work at those programs. I think the grants will cover it.
Any questions?
All right.
Okay, so then we can go into seven point four, Consider Approving Summer Twenty Twenty-Five Youth Work Experience Program, Setting Hourly Rates and Allowing Execution of Contracts.
So I just gave you, I mean, a brief summary of what's in that agenda item anyway, and what the summer youth program is. Um, you know, last year, we had about seventeen youth, ten businesses who participated. Um, eleven youth had no placements. And then I gave the update here, Arlington, on this, when I had typed this, I had thought it was just gonna be Bobby's Joe. Um, or last year, it was Bobby, Bobby's Joe, North Gillum Health Center and Arlington Childcare. Uh, the Health Center is not gonna utilize the program this year. The Arlington Childcare and Bobby, Bobby's Joe is, and then also the port, the grocery store, the hotel, and possibly the library. So we now have six businesses in Arlington, um, confirmed to participate this year. And then Condon, I haven't heard back from all the businesses yet, but Jamison and Marshall have been participating since I've been doing this program. The Drive-In has, the Chamber always has, um, the Condon School did reply, they want a youth this summer. Um, the Health Center is not gonna participate this summer. Um, the Early Learning Center will, the Condon Hotel will, and then we're adding two boys and possibly that home childcare. I need to do a little research on that.
Okay.
Um, so even though we've lost a couple, I think we're still ahead in the businesses that are going to.
Okay.
Participate this year. Um, what I am asking of the county today is, we need to set the wage for the youth for the summer work program. Historically, we've always just set it at whatever the state minimum wage is. Currently, that's thirteen dollars and seventy cents. It will go up in July one. Um, the information I could find online, that rate hasn't been released yet, so, um, to be determined. I, I guess my ask would be, can we just set it at minimum wage, whatever the, the state rate is? And then, um. We have a contract that I, that I draw up, um, last year to the finance manager. I'm, I'm hoping Brooklyn will work with me this year. Um, she wasn't here last year when I did up the contracts, but she's here now. And just figure out like what the rate is, um. Probably permission too, historically, we've done two hundred hours. Each youth gets two hundred hours. So approval to go two hundred hours at minimum wage, and then Brooklyn could help me figure out what the taxes are and the minimum wages. We put that into the contract. I go to the businesses and let them know. We'll pay you for two hundred hours. This is what the wages will be. This is what your taxes will be. This is how much your check's going to be for the summer. And then just some other things in the contract. They need to get a bully certificate and show me proof that they have a bully certificate to employ the kids. Um, letting, you know, the contract states, um, you're the employer, we're just funding, so they're on your payroll. They're under your supervision, um, that kinda stuff's in the contract. So I would just need permission for the wage to be set, the two hundred hours per youth, and, um, the ability to execute the contracts with the businesses.
And, and sometimes this results in, uh, the employers keeping the kids for longer and paying them beyond what the contract is with the county too.
Correct.
It's a benefit to the kids.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So, and that, and that's up to them, and I've, I've had kids also ask, well, what if they wanna pay, pay me more? And I said, well, that's between you and your employer. The county is agreeing to two hundred hours at minimum wage. You know, historically, that's what we set, and, um, you know, but after that, it's the business's employee. They're on their payroll, they're.
So we, we, Gillum County has provided the funding upfront to the businesses.
Correct.
That's how we do, we've done this in the past, and.
And last year, I'd asked, and it's in the contract, um, that they send me copies of the youth's time sheets every month.
Yes.
To ensure that they're spending the money we've sent them.
Mm-hmm.
And then, like, at the end of last summer, probably more in the fall, I went back to the businesses and several issued a check back to the county for unspent funds.
So you're tracking that, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, yep. So there, there were several, the Chamber, the Health Center, there were several that sent us their unspent money back.
Okay. Any questions? All right, are we ready for a motion? And I just, just wanna clarify before we make the motion, we need to add not only minimum wage, but the two hundred hour approval. Is that, is that gonna cover everything you need in the motion then?
Yes.
Okay. So is that.
I'll move to approve the wage for the summer work program as a minimum wage set forth, and also at two hundred hours per youth, state of Oregon, and to grant contract signing and authority for the program to Amy Nation.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Um, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Hi, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Next on the agenda, we have, um, Public Health, Dailin Wilson, come up. Giving us an update today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I promise I won't make it quite as intensive as I did last time. We were here, but with all new faces last time, I felt like I needed to be a little more thorough. Um, yeah, things are going well. We are finishing up, wrapping up our third year of having public health here in Gillum County. Um, and I think it's, I think it's been very advantageous to have it locally in our county and out of the hands in a different county, and we've been able to bring more projects into, you know, our schools and, um. Well, various different places, but yeah, so it's going well. Um, as we're at the end of our third year, the state performs a triennial review every three years, so that's our big thing coming up. Um, that will start this summer. Um, so basically, what that means is each, not every single different program element, but most program elements meet with us, review what we're doing, and making sure that we're doing all the things that we're supposed to be doing, um, and gives us a report on how that's going, and also any suggestions on, you know, work that we need to improve upon. Um, and so I'll keep you posted as, as that happens. It will likely take months to complete. Leah sat in on a meeting with me Monday, um, that is part of the fiscal portion of the review. And so what they're asking is that, um, one of you, Leah, uh, will do the fiscal, um, review with us, look over all of our stuff, and then they will talk with Leah and look over what, what she has gone through. So she and I have some work ahead of us on that aspect. However, she's intimately involved in all those processes, so I'm hoping it'll be pretty easy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we did just finish up, I think last time this was happening, but, uh, we finished up our WIC reviews. So that's just one program. They do it every two years, um, and that review went really, really well. I, uh, was scared to death, of course, having the first one come down the pike, but, um, it went really well. We got, um, you know, great reviews from, from a couple of different staff members at the state, you know, just super happy with how things are going, even though we're a very small agency. Um, you know, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and they were pretty happy to see all of that. So I felt really good getting the feedback and that we didn't have a ton of things that we needed to improve upon. So, um, that was a big lift off of our shoulders, but now we get ready for the, the bigger one. Um, as you've all probably seen in your post office boxes, the survey, yeah. So we put out a community health survey. This is a, um, a deliverable that comes with one of our program elements, the modernization, um, PE fifty-one, um, and so that's one of the, the pieces that we needed to meet. But it is going to be important to gather local information that doesn't include Sherman County and Wasco County, and hopefully give us a little better insight as to, you know, what our community, community members, you know, want and what they, what they see as needs. Um, and that seems to be going pretty darn well. And that seems to be going pretty darn well. Our goal, which doesn't seem like a huge number, our goal is to get about two hundred and fifty responses. Um, there were initially nine hundred and some odd surveys sent to households. About two hundred of them were sent back, unfortunately, they weren't delivered because, you know. Gillum County, we have a lot of P O boxes, um, it's based off of the D M V database and. Sometimes that includes a street address and not a P O box, and we had no way to get around that, so. So far, we have, last I saw, a hundred and ninety eight return surveys, so I felt really good about that. That's. A pretty big number for such small communities and more people historically have not participated in those surveys, so. Um, we're hoping to have results from that that we've kind of talked through, fed through in the summertime. And once we get those, we're planning to post them on our website so that the public, you know, if they're interested in looking at those, can see just, you know. Very high level uh, looks to see what what came back from those surveys. I think there's been some interest, so we want to make sure we put that information out there. We are, her big. Task right now is, um, we're working on putting together a job description for a prevention coordinator, so with our prevention dollars. Rather than all of us, you know, trying to find little things to piece together and do, we're we're really pushing forward with hiring. Uh, what's gonna start out as a part-time person to do just. Prevention work, um, outreach within Arlington, outreach within Condon, and hopefully bring, you know, some new energy and ideas and. And, you know, new fun things to the community that that really focus on, focus on prevention work.
We we do have, we did have, um. A part-time person in the juvenile prevention budget, and we're proposing moving that so that we could utilize that as an I G A. It's, um, currently fifteen thousand dollars approximately, so. Um, then we could create an I G A potentially with you if you need supplemental funding. For that.
I'll come back to that. Yes, which. Is is a concern as of yesterday, um, so. You know, all aware of the federal funding cuts that are coming, that is definitely going to affect us. I did find out yesterday, some of the prevention dollars is. Part of those cuts. I don't know and have not heard from that program yet, what that amount looks like and how that will affect our dollars. For the next biennium, so, um, I'm trying to be patient and wait and hear what that looks like, but. Um, it's it's a lot of up in the air, but as it stands now, what I can see is, you know, we we stand to lose probably between seventy to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, out of out of our. Funds that that could be coming up, so that it's definitely a hit. Prevention's a big one. We want to make that a priority. I think it certainly should be a priority, and so. That would be a huge help to be able to tap into that if if we need to, if those dollars are are cut.
Fifteen thousand was before we knew about this, which we found out yesterday about the potential cuts.
Yeah, so as you will likely see in your emails, if you haven't already, there will be letters coming from the state that will, um, you know, state the changes to the I G A. Um, and dollars that will likely have to be sent back to the state. So we'll keep our eyes on that and.
Summer program, so is that part of the prevention person's job that we're looking for?
We are not necessarily tying them together at this point, so it sounds like we have somebody interested. In doing the summer program, um, so we're kind of going down that avenue first, um, and and. Want to, that's that's kind of like at the top of our list is to get that taken care of for the summer. And then we'll work on the prevention coordinator, and then in the future, if we can tie those two together, then that would be the hope so that it's. Definitely. Covered, that we have somebody for it, we're not looking for somebody year to year that that would tie in with a prevention coordinator. Yeah. And we've been talking with C C S about that. Historically, they have taken the lead on that role. Um, and we wanted to make sure we weren't stepping on toes, that that was something C C S wanted to continue to do, you know, we could take a supporting role and not the lead role. Um, but our last, um, conversation was that they were ready for us to take the lead on that, so. Um, but that they were still willing to be in a supportive role to help with it, so, but, yeah. Um, otherwise, still working with the schools, with the clinic in Arlington, we had, you know, really good turnout this year for immunizations. Um, highest number since we started it, so that was really good to see and help several families. Working closely with Wheeler County even, where we've got, um, an agreement with them for babies first, and so if and when we get our first participant. County out with that as well. Yeah, that's, it's a lot.
You're doing a great job.
But any questions for me at all?
So do you think this, is this gonna affect any of your money that you're spending at the clinic right now?
No, thankfully. We started it, and those were the first funds we tapped into, so just a little background. Um, part of our COVID funds that we got, we got approval to use to help with the clinic remodel. Um, a big portion of that is the office that Ashley and I work out of, which was, I. Most of you have been there, it's a tiny little kind of cubby hole that didn't have a ton of space, and so that has been renovated and opened up, so we have. Um, some more workable space between us and, you know, maybe can talk on the phone at the same time without interrupting one another, but. Um, so we were able to use some of those COVID funds to help with the remodel. Of of that back end of the clinic that is is helping us out immensely, and, um, so when we. Were paying for the remodel, we tapped into those funds first just to get it done, so. Thankfully, yes, they said anything, you know, spent after March twenty fourth. Um, we were not guaranteed to get reimbursed for, so we have all of, you know, the bills and stuff to show that we had. Expended that money before that March twenty fourth date, so.
Construction is on. Time.
Construction is on time. It has been a really, really. Great experience working with them, um. We, everything is complete that can be completed, we're waiting on doors and then trim to finish it up, so. Um, the emergency room is complete, we're doing, you know, vinyl base, and so that one is, um, done except for the doors that will go on it. And we just found out yesterday that the doors are coming early, um, they're gonna start Monday to put in the doors and the trim, and then it will be done, so. I'll be moving back in there, I think, next week, which will be nice.
So that was part of what our procurement with the attorney funds. Helped with them. Which we found out from the audit. That, yeah, you've got to have procurement policies in place and. So.
Yes, yeah, definitely. Thank you, thank you for your help, I appreciate it.
I don't have any.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, um. Item three point six, uh, greater Idaho discussion. Anybody have any input?
You know, yeah, I still think that's our deal, I mean, the people. Gets that far.
So what I found out. Is that, you know, there's two, there's two avenues, there's initiative petition, there's a referendum. Um, avenue, and I I think on something like this, that it. The election would cost the people money. You would need to be sure the will of the people support the idea. We haven't had anyone approach us with an initiative petition. Once, and if that were to happen, we would take up the matter at that time. That's how I'm thinking. What does everyone else think? There's no action for us to take at this time.
Yeah, I just don't think it's our position to drive it.
Right, I agree. Okay, thank you. That covers that. Consent agenda. Uh, we have the minutes and we have a few changes, I believe, suggested by. So I I had a couple. Filling things, but the main thing was, um. Adding the language to the the weed hearing that, um, I had a tension conflict of interest. Other than that. All right. Then we also have, um, bills pending review and amendment to extension of rental agreement for Justice Court. Carrie Hader. And then. Consider approval of county assessment function, funding assessment. Cappa grant application for twenty twenty five, twenty six. So any questions about those items? No, I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the amended. Um, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Meeting minutes.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, so any discussion? All in favor? I, motion carries. Okay. Public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five oh one fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six. Gillum County weed assessment, second reading of ordinance. And that is item five point zero on the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? No public comment?
Any have any?
No, we haven't had any public comment. Just wait a few more minutes just to make sure.
Nobody's online?
Nobody's online? Okay. Public hearing is closed. There are two suggested motions. Motion one is in your packet.
I move to ask the judge to perform the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash oh one by title only.
I'll second motion. Is there any discussion?
You don't have to read it till. Don't have to read it till next time.
Okay, I will second it, okay. All right, I wasn't sure because of your potential conflict that you didn't learn before. Okay, so you have seconded, so it's been moved and seconded. To, um. Sorry, lost my place here for a moment. It's been moved and seconded to, um. Ask the judge to perform a second reading of the ordinance by title only. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
And then I will move to accept the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash oh one by title only and to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the second reading. I need to read the ordinance by title only first, sorry.
Yeah, that's.
I need to do that in the matter of the special weed assessment within Gillum County for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Ordinance number twenty twenty five oh one. Okay, so it's been moved and. Seconded to accept the second reading of the ordinance number twenty twenty five oh one by title only and to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion?
I don't have any.
Okay, all in favor? I, motion carries. Complete. Thank you. All right. Okay, we, is Brooklyn, Brooklyn, you're here, all right, come on out. Brooklyn, Griffith, our finance director is going to address the county court regarding adoption of resolution R twenty twenty five oh four. Amending the position schedule for non-represented employees from our need to salary.
Uh, yeah, in your guys' packet, you should have just a short briefing and. The resolution attached to it. We decided to go the resolution route. Mainly for ease of tracking historical data, it's hasn't necessarily been the way it was done, but. We decided to do a resolution for this aspect. Slots was being proposed here, the same discussion we've been having for. I think it's, we're going on our third month now, so it's something that's not new to you guys. This is just the final product. Once we talked with the union and got their L O A. Uh, this would be the last step. Well, close to the last step.
Okay, getting very close. It's been a little bit of a process, but we're getting there. Good job on that.
The attachments you have there, it's not really, it just shows, uh, who's staying in those hourly positions. I think there's four of them. Uh, on the represented side of things, excuse me, this is the non-represented side of things, a few more on the non-represented side of things, but. I don't have any additional things, unless you guys have any questions. I think after talking with the judge, we're going to put it into effect July one. Has, that's what F T's are based off of, um, these are all. Full-time F T positions, so we're just gonna do July one when they get their full increases.
Yeah, it'll be easier and more, um. To to track the beginning and the, you know, when it started, um, just to calculate the hours, then we can tie it to the fiscal year. Process, so. But it looks like just the part-time ones that have part-time hours will be still remain.
Yes.
Everybody else went and.
Salary positions.
Okay. So after we. Conduct business on six point one and six point two, which is both of of the. Actions we need to take, the resolution and approval of a letter of agreement with the union. We we should have a motion to, um, make this change effective July first. So sorry to add another motion, but it'll be good to have, um, clarity on that one. Okay?
So, can we just?
So let's just do the first, um, the resolution, so and then we'll do six point two, and then we'll just do another motion at the end of it, so we'll just take it one at a time. So we're just working on six point one, the resolution right now.
I move to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash oh four as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve resolution R twenty twenty five oh four as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? I, motion carries.
Okay. Okay, I move to approve.
I have more updates, sorry. There's a second part to the L O A that isn't tied to the position schedule. It's also the salary, the poll increase of the three and a half percent. Since your guys' contract is with the L O A or with the union, you guys approved that. Increase for the representative employees, and then the budget committee just approves it, so that's that second piece of the L O A that you're approving, so we can.
And that is if it goes through the budget committee. This is just approving the scale, right?
Yeah, Kelly can explain it better. Kelly's our union president. Okay, so the approval of the poller here would officially bind it at a three and a half percent bullet for the union members. Um, and then the budget committee has to follow along with the contracted agreement between the union and the county. And then I just heard that.
That's already in agreement. With the county, the current one, right?
It's already listed in there that that's negotiated between you guys and the union.
There's a range.
Yeah, there's a range in the C P A, it's based on the C P I W, the West Side class. W, the low is two and a half and the highest three and a half, um, but the, um. Management is always welcome to go above and beyond the contract requirements. The contract requirement set a minimum. So at minimum, we have to get between two and a half and three and a half. Um, and then I just had one quick question. The union did approve the L O A last night, however, ours said. Updated on signing, so, or moving to salary effective upon signing the L O A. So if we're gonna change that to July one, I'll have to take it back and get. Approval for that change, and that's, that's fine.
Right in the middle of the budget and a lot of other things right now, so. So.
We've had some back and.
Do you have to have a full meeting and?
Um, no, I can just have the executive board get together and. Decide on that, so we'll be able to do that quick.
So do we need to hold off on that?
No, it was just, if we signed it as is, we would have to make the effect upon signing instead of July first, but. She's gonna take care of making clear with the union that it will be July first.
And I don't see that being a problem. I just need to, we need to approve.
Gonna sign it yet, we just need the amendment. Before we sign it. We can, we can approve it conditionally upon the July first date.
Yeah.
Does that sound?
Yeah, each side has to approve the agreement. It doesn't matter which side, you know, we both have to get to the approval and then we sign it, so. You guys can go ahead and approve today and we'll um approve an amended.
Mm-hmm.
Version.
Okay, so we're gonna include the amendment that it's effective July first.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, okay. Do you have any other questions? Are are we comfortable with, but that'll be the third. That'll be the third motion that we need to make?
When added into this one?
We just realized when Kelly came up that um. That this says upon signing, so I think we just need to approve it as amended, effective July first. And then we're gonna have to make a motion regarding the nonrepresented employees when we're done. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that sounds, okay.
Okay, I move to approve the Ask Me Local three, three, two, six, letter of agreement as amended effective July first. Two thousand and twenty five.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. That takes care of the union letter of agreement. It takes care of the resolution, and then we need a motion that um, the um.
Positions.
Position schedule for nonrepresented employees from hourly to salary um is effective July first.
For nonrepresented?
Yes.
Position schedule for nonrepresented. Employees. To be effective July first?
Mm-hmm. Is that your motion?
Is that for the?
That's our third motion.
That's the third motion.
The third and final motion.
Yeah.
I will cover it.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Um, do I need to add anything else? No, that's it, okay.
Nope, just this.
Motion, uh, position schedule for nonrepresented to be effective July first. Twenty twenty five.
Okay.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. July first, thank you. Thank you for all your work on that. You worked hard.
Thanks, Brooklyn.
Not to mention the budget, changing accounting systems and everything else.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is, are you sure you're there to go very far? Because now we have the.
Is there anything else?
Grant.
Now, Michelle? Okay, update on tax appeal reimbursement request. Um. I reached out to legal counsel, Jeremy Green, and. Explained the situation and the request that was made. Um. We talked about solutions and we talked about. Gillum County's. Um. Can we do this? Um, and and what? You know, so his, the legal advice we received is do not tie any funds that you give to. A taxing district. Um, to to tax replacement. Because it puts Gillum County in a position of liability. And potential future exposure to having to pay any taxing district who comes to us for that reason. The solutions we came up with were a couple. Um. We, although the SIP funds are rolling off on the grant programs. We will have a couple of agreements that will remain. Um, for the amounts of money that were requested each year. I believe that we can absorb either through operational support grants or north and, nor, excuse me, north and south and special project funds, if there's others who request. Um, to help, to help with this. Um. And I I also reiterated that we we want to make sure we support the districts. We would never want them to fail because of this. Um. Them having to absorb. The. Impact of a tax appeal in a tax code area in which they're not benefiting from those taxes, so um. We also talked about if an appeal went on and on and on, how could we help? Um, with emergency funding or something like that, so. My thoughts, and we'll just hear what each person has to say, is. Um. Take it year to year and allow. The special projects grants to do their job and the operational support grants to do their job and encourage these entities to apply. For any project that they could consider an equivalent value to the amount they're losing in tax. And if this went on for a period of time, we could create an emergency funding pool of money.
So my preference would be for them to go to the operationals because as we know, on the south end, which is. The districts that are mostly affected by this. There is only so much money and they usually use up the whole.
Yeah, that's true.
Pool on other things, so my preference would be for them to just. Put in for the operational.
So we're going to receive um and operationals a good, a good pool of money um. To take advantage of, and we can even even create a parameter of of a preference. Um, that that we're gonna fund something like this first. You know. The assessor tells me that this isn't going to go on for a long time. He doesn't believe. I don't want to speak for him, but he thinks we're getting close. Doesn't mean appeals can't happen again. Um, so. The operational support money, so we have two SIP agreements. We have Shepherd's Flat, which generates about three million dollars a year, and there's two years left. And I'm gonna talk at the end about making sure we do some education to make sure that people understand that that big pot of money goes away. But we also have the Montag Project, which. Um, generates about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year. Actually, there's one year of a special uh local improvement payment, but it's. The budget we're working on right now, it's the last year for that four hundred thousand dollar local improvement payment, so then it'll drop to. Three hundred and forty-five and change thousand. So there's gonna be some money, even though the SIP monies are running out, there will be. That agreement and the agreement we're working on right now, which is probably going to be equivalent to the Montag Project. So that's not community service fee, that's just discretionary money that we can um. Continue to help with, so. Do you have any questions? Those who brought it up, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And if you ever get into, if it if it goes on, we'll just take it one year at a time, if this lingers and it keeps. You know, we can look into, and the attorney supported this, emergency funding um, help.
So when you, one year at a time, since it's gone on three years, they're okay to apply for the three years?
Yeah, 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 for both, well, for both the two who approached.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can make that a a preference, so?
Yeah, I mean, I noticed in other, we did some uh, when we did some. Research on the grants program, there was a lot of things, we have a lot of discretion with the grant program, and. One of the things in the grant program in the past that was discussed is um. You know, preferences such as if you applied for grant funds in the past, you would have preference over someone who didn't. That's just an example. I'm just. I'm just presenting an example that we can set the parameters for the grant program, and if we want to set a parameter on this one, we could do that. Um. As as preference. But I think we should see how they, how they come in.
So if I'm looking at this, right, like last year, I think in the budget, they, it looks like they had in the SIP. They have nine million that was unappropriated.
Well, we had, we had some budget things happen with the SIP, for example. Um. So. Five point six million dollars was budgeted, but that's not where the SIPs are. They're like four. So a SIP dropped off and that wasn't, so. The four, I I'm looking at, we have the fourteen million dollar carryover. And then we have some obligations because we have the three million dollar um. Uh. Grant program that's coming next year, but we also have a three million dollar carryover for projects that aren't complete for previous grants, so. The fund's fine, I guess. That's, that's where we're at, and it's still gonna generate money. One year, actually, two budget cycles of. Three million plus, and then after that, probably um, grant funding money of like six hundred thousand plus.
And I think my, my point is, we're not, we're not talking huge.
No.
Of money on the south end, the.
No.
I mean.
No.
We're not talking.
Uh-uh.
Millions of dollars we're talking.
Right, so. Does that make you feel comfortable about what you can do?
Yes.
Okay, alright, yes. So, we just needed to be sure we weren't putting ourself, our neck out there and. And opening up a can of worms.
Which I think all of us can appreciate.
Yeah. You're right. Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult situation that you find yourself in.
And I'm not saying you can't apply for the special projects, I'm just like, just saying, if we pile them all into the special projects, then. Pool is not gonna be very big for, but. I I, I mean, I wouldn't be afraid to apply for special projects, things that you may have had in the pipeline that you were wanting to apply for, so, okay.
Alright, so anything else on that one? Okay, um. Next item is uh. We needed to add a letter of support for the justice reinvestment grant. Let's talk about that at the end of new business so that we can move on to Condon School District, Michelle Gears, so she can get on with her day. Okay, this is a capital investment grant application for Condon School District.
And um, he is here to, to present.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to come and share the proposal that um we submitted. And I know that uh there's been discussion about the grants changing and all of that, I read the papers, all that, maybe that's changed, so. Um, because initially, part of our conversation was in applying for capital improvement grants, fifty percent match sometimes can be really tough.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and in the past, it was twenty-five, and so the request was, could we? Consider moving back to the twenty-five percent match?
And we did that.
Yep. And so that was initially why I wanted to come and like just sit in front of the commissioners and have that conversation. Um, but then, now I'm gonna just talk about the grant. So, huh, we just submitted a capital investment grant for eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, and the grant is primarily around safety uh concerns at the district, so. Um, I came back in around December, back to the district, and we've had two kind of major. Um, they weren't true emergencies, but emergency uh situations where we evacuated our buildings. And um, it's sad that this day and age that schools have to really think about what their facilities look like to protect kids. But we do, and so we've been really looking at our high school building primarily because our new grade school building. Um, like, we did a pretty good job with doing like double door entries and all of that, and so we wanna kind of start working on bringing the high school. Um, priorities up to the same standard as the grade school for safety. So within this grant, we just talked about um. Building a double door entry, so there'd be a vestibule at the front, so people come through one door, they wait and they get buzzed in. Um, putting panic buttons in. Uh, the building and then lock down doors, so you hit a button and all the doors lock. Um, and then PA systems that would connect to that whole system, so like at our grade school building, if we hit our panic button. Um, something comes over the intercom saying like, you know, we're in lockdown or whatever. Um, so we're wanting to do some upgrades mainly around that. And then um, kind of one of our facility maintenance type projects, um, but it's a good time to do it because we would tear out the entries. Would be uh upgrading the flooring in the building, so um, for the most part, most of the asbestos is out of the building and flooring, but we have a couple spots when we. Tear into it, we're gonna end up doing some abatement. Um, so we would do that along with this project, so. This project probably wouldn't roll out the bulk of it until, not this summer, the summer of twenty-six.
So, okay, good.
Yeah.
Well, I think one. Our most precious commodity is our kids, and there were a lot of people. Pretty worried about our kids when, when all of that went down, and unfortunately, in today's day and age, we have to invest. In protecting that commodity, so. Are there any questions for?
So did you guys get bids for that? That, or how did you come up with that?
We didn't get quotes. Um, we had Jeff Shaw helps the district with getting like. All of our facility information out and then our RFPs. Um, so he went around and got some quotes and estimates from folks. Um, for the, all the electronic stuff, like the PAs and all of that, we already are working with a company that does our grade school. So we had them give us uh approximate quotes, I won't say it was a true quote, but to kind of get those numbers, so. Um. I mean, potentially, it's gonna be over that, like, once we start getting into that building. Something else is gonna come up and we know that, so, but.
So is your double door entry, is that, would that be? Go through the outside door and then there's another one built inside, or you're gonna build it on the outside?
No, we're gonna do it on the inside, so like at the high school where you come in the main door by Lori Meyer's office right there. Um, we'll add a wall on the inside. And then you can enter the building and come through her office. She can buzz you into her office first initially. Or just buzz you right through the doors into the building. Um, and that's exactly how our new grade school is, uh, so, okay.
So this'll be, everything'll be covered then?
Yeah. Yeah.
Good. Um, I support fully funding this. Did you want to talk about?
Good.
About it?
I have a question, uh, with the new guidelines, where we have a project that. Already, I'm just gonna do it in the next three years, I'm thinking that. You guys want to approve making the agreement in the next three years, and I just work with. I need improvements to make.
I think you could, you should work with her. You'd support that?
We were talking the, about updating, like, you know, the sign of the twenty twenty six, so I'd write the agreement to end December twenty twenty six.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah, and part of our, uh, part of our, um. If you approve this, like, we would start some of the work, like, uh. Like, the PA systems could be done before the double door entry piece, um, so that stuff could be done this next school year.
Mm-hmm.
But the double door entry and the flooring, which is kind of the bulk of the project, would be twenty twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
But cameras could potentially go in this.
We'll start the agreement.
Yeah.
If and when they.
And then just extend.
It'll extend, yeah. Yeah.
Come back and ask for it.
No.
So how much money do we have left in the capital?
Just to, just over two, not including. I don't know, it's gonna be two point eight or something, because I already.
Almost right.
So you already deducted it, or you didn't?
In my brain, yes, it's closer to three.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
So we need to make this for?
To approve the capital investment grant for funding this volume amount of, and the amount is?
Six hundred.
Six hundred thousand, yeah.
And do we want to make that for? Do you want to say three twenty six, or we just go with this?
I think we just decided it doesn't, we have a motion, I can just work with.
Okay.
Right.
You have any questions? Um, I move to approve the capital investment grant for the twenty twenty four, twenty five as follows, Condon School District, twenty-five J, an amount of six hundred thousand.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, commissioners. Oh, I want to ask you one thing. Are you interested in early college program for us to consider um in the budget for next year? Because we have some discretionary SIP funds, and for county discretionary funds for Condon and Arlington.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have to earmark it in the budget, it just would be available.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be awesome. Thank you so much.
Yes. Gillen County has funded that in the past, and I think it's a good investment in our, yeah, future of our kids.
Yes, we appreciate.
Yes, thank you. Alright, um, next is Consider Operational Support Grant for Arlington Community Childcare. Is there anyone online from Arlington Community Childcare? Okay.
I would like to say, I am here, sorry, it's Ashley.
I'm online. Tremendous effort by Arlington Community Childcare to get up and running and meet the community need. Um, they are working hard, and I, I commend them for that. They're making a request of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for operational funds for the remainder of this year, potentially into the next year.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if Ashley was gonna present.
Do you have anything to present, Ashley, are you there?
I don't think she had anything to add.
So they just updated their grant.
Same situation with always four, they hit a long ways, they, we talked again about them getting an audit, that was the one thing, they don't have a pass physical to audit, um, so they're working on
One of the things I really like about their, their financial statements are actual books, it's not a separate spreadsheet. So it shows you for sure what they're. So we, um, currently out in the Would she want to chat in for anything? Just breathe. If there's, I wanna make sure she has the opportunity to say anything she'd like to. I'm also in support of fully funding this request, does anybody else have any?
Was this just the release of some of the, sorry?
Yeah, it was funds that we held back for them, um, but there was not a current application based on their current structure. So, we asked them to reapply.
Uh, Ashley applied with her call, then we still have funds from twenty-four available, so we utilized those funds. You guys dispersed some of them, of the initial two hundred money that they requested, twenty-five, and now that she came back with the question.
I think from Ashley.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Good.
Oh, perfect, hi, so yeah, we um are working really hard, and we have a great team, we feel really good about moving forward now, um, the board too, we're all in support of each other. Um, and even this meeting, uh, this Friday, we have a meeting to talk about the funds we have. Um, even if this fund request was denied, on how to move forward um, with our funds, and for all of us to talk about our budget and where to spend the money appropriately, as well as getting the audit, and working closely with Kelly Nonprofit as well, um, just to make sure we're um, doing everything correctly, and spending the money wisely, um, to make us last as well, so. Um, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them too, but we thank you guys for your support and are excited to move forward.
Good. Any questions?
No.
Oh, I, I'm ready to.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure, did you have any questions?
Okay, go ahead.
I'll move to approve the operational support grant for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, as follows, Arlington Childcare at a hundred and fifty thousand.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ashley, for everything you do, you're doing a great job, um, meeting the community need, thank you.
Thank you guys so much, I really appreciate it, we all do.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, consider RF, thank you very much, we're gonna move on to the next subject, which is seven point three, consider R F Ps for twenty twenty-five Mormon cricket spraying, Skylar Palmer, Agriculture Outreach Program Coordinator. Hi, Skylar.
Hello, thank you for letting me be here today, so. I'm just here to talk about the, the bids for chemical and for spraying, and get them approved, about which ones you wanna use, and which bits you would like to go with.
This is your first time, we have Jordan, who had lots of experience before, so, um so, give us a, give us an overview of what you've done, and your recommendation.
Okay, so I sent out bids to, um, to McGregor and Moore County Grain Growers. And McGregor, they are not able to do the Demolin, they don't, they don't, they have to buy so much in order to, to have it on hand, and so they don't wanna be sitting on any extra. And then, of course, they can supply it with M S O, and then with Moore County Grain Growers, they can do Demolin. Uh, but then they also have a generic um brand that is cheaper, but it's, it's the same exact thing. And then, of course, they have M S O and shuttles, which is, I think, either two hundred and fifty gallons or two hundred and seventy gallons per shuttle. And then M S O for, that comes in two gallons, so two and a half gallons by in uh, in like jugs and stuffs.
Okay, alright, so you're saying, um, more of penny grain bars?
Yeah, I would, yes, that's what we've gone with in the past, and they're local to, like, really close to Lexington, where we can where the, the sprayers usually fly out of, so.
Do we still need to spray for these crickets?
Um, so I know they sprayed a little bit last year, and I actually had a meeting on, actually yesterday, and we were, I was talking with Pete um, Flies with the O D A, and right now, I'm like the downhill, downhill trend, so if everything continues to go in the right direction this year, we could potentially spray even less, potentially not at all. Um, they're gonna start working on, I'm doing survey, surveying in the next few weeks, just depends on like the weather and degree days. They have the soil has to be at the right temperature for so long, and the air temperature has to be at the right temperature for so long before they can start surveying. Um, but along with the surveying, just kinda give you update on that, um. The money for that runs out on June thirtieth, and so this year is kinda gonna be a short of money when it comes to surveying. So I'm gonna work with um people in North, in the North County, uh, with my contact list, to help them, encourage them to do their own scouting. And then we can help, the, the O D A can do like more specific scouting in areas, so we can focus on the areas that potentially are more hotspots and stuff like that.
Okay, and then, did you, I just wanna clarify something, so when, when Jordan came to the county court before they approved, um they, they approved the bid for a total package of the spray in the flight.
Yes.
In an amount.
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing today?
Uh, for the total amount.
Cause the motion was, um, to approve the award of Mormon Cricket Abatement for O S U's extension in the amount of a hundred and five thousand three hundred sixty dollars, that's what was done last year.
Yeah.
So, do we have an amount?
Sure.
For the flight and the spray?
Well, we won't know exactly what we need until after the surveying is done.
Okay, but I mean, for, it, it, they recommended A S A P flying services, do we have a recommendation on who would fly?
Um, though how much they would.
Who, who would fly?
Yeah, the A S A P flying service, would be the one, yeah, yeah, yeah. And they have the rate of seven dollars and fifty cents, um, or three gallons per acre, which is the rate we need for them.
Okay.
So is the other, that three gallons per acre rate for area application, that's seven fifty just for that? Or is that seven fifty for flying?
That includes all the flying and everything, doesn't include like, of course, the chemical, you have to, is separate, but that includes paying for the, the flying.
So the flying is seven fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on how much they do.
And they?
Yeah, per acre, yeah, yeah.
What we could do is we could set a max, since we don't know an amount. Uh, what do you think about it, dear, or talk about another idea?
No, because I think last year, we said it for a hundred and five, and then obviously, they didn't use it all, so some of it went for the draw.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we wanna set it for any less, just in case, but I think we're.
I think after this year, we'll have a pretty good idea where the, how things should look in the future, but that we need to keep
Yeah.
going with like the money and stuff like that.
Okay. Are, have they just been concentrated in kinda one area?
It's mostly in, I know it's like from Bay, uh, Laila Canyon to Arlington, and then to like Willow Creek, a little bit over.
I didn't know it was this way, or?
No, no.
Okay.
Just in North County.
Yeah, and our ground is way different.
Yeah.
But they, they hitch a ride every once in a while on stuff, but they haven't gotten started up yet.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so the motion could be similar to what was done before, which was here to, um, I don't know which one of you wanted to make the motion, um to approve the award for Mormon Cricket Abatement with O S U extension in the amount of you could round it to a hundred and five and one to, not to exceed, not to exceed.
I'll make a motion to approve the award for the Mormon Cricket Abatement with O S U extension, Skylar
Homer.
Homer, and the, in the amount of a hundred and five thousand.
Okay, second. Not to exceed.
Oh, not to exceed that, a hundred and five thousand.
Motion is amended, seconded, okay, any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
There was a request to budget for it, but we don't have to spend it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm talking about next budget year.
Um, there is also unused chemical that was left over.
Oh, okay, yes, I noticed that in your notes, so you'll use that.
Yeah, yeah, I realized I forgot on my aerial spraying bid, that was for the A S A P flying service, that was.
Oh, okay.
I forgot that.
Yeah, that's okay, no problem, so you're gonna give us an update once we know more.
Yes. I'll keep everything updated, um, quarter updated, and I'll start sending out emails here. Uh, my first thing, like I said, since the budget for surveying is ending on July thirtieth, they kinda have a little bit restriction, cause that's for the whole state. Um, so I'm gonna try and encourage, um, people in the North County to, you know, do, just be on the watch and lookout, so if they start seeing them then we can focus more on those areas, so that we can make sure we get the survey where we want it done, instead of wasting money, running around everywhere.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, now we need to go back up to letter of support for the Justice Reinvestment Grant, um. Commissioner Watkins, do you wanna talk about this, since you got this request?
I, yeah, I sent it to the last passport, I opened it up this morning, sorry for just looking at it, but I, I think it's um, basically, all the counties that, uh, Norcore they just get a letter of support from each of the courts to add to their grant application, I believe, Monday.
All of the county courts within our course region, okay, got it.
Here you might be able to tell you more. It's a, um
Justice Reinvestment.
Letter of support for Gillen County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, Justice Reinvestment Grant Proposal. Yeah, so they just are, um, asking us to give them a letter of support.
And probably should have every year, so there's probably a letter out there.
Yeah, we found it. Yeah.
We have a letter to sign right here.
I think it was for a two-year grant cycle. So, yeah.
Yep.
So, Anya got it typed up and.
It's ready to go.
Yeah, I sent my yes.
Okay, so we'll just have a motion to.
So I, I'm due to approve the letter of support for Gillen County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council for the Justice Reinvestment Grant Proposal.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We, we might, we might just add that it is for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven grant cycle.
Sorry.
Oh, in the, in the motion, yes. In the minutes. Sorry, yes. Alright, got that, that'll work, okay, that way, when we look back at the motion, we'll know where it was from.
That money's used for programming.
Yeah. It was Joyce, and she sent it to Delaney, which Delaney's gone, and then it's C C'd. So I did get it, but
seven point five, consider proposal to move location of Veteran Service Office, this is Eric Aiken, Veteran Services Officer. And he's online, um. Mister Aiken contacted me in my office, and I just thought it would be best to bring this forth at a, at a meeting, and, and discuss his idea, and for us to be able to address it before we, um agree to that. So, Mister Aiken, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for seeing me, um, so, I approached Judge Patnun, and actually requested to see if I could possibly move the Veteran Service Office from the judge's chamber in the courthouse, down to the Gronquist Building. Um, and the reasoning for it is, there's actually a higher population of veterans in the Arlington area. But the other reason is, it spreads out evenly, my three offices between Condon and Fossil only being twenty miles apart. And I'd still do home visits to the Condon area and everything on a regular basis.
What's your numbers in Arlington, and what are your numbers in Condon?
So they're approximately this, close to the same, um, as in, I see about seventy veterans in Condon area, and about a hundred in the Arlington area. But the census has Arlington at a higher veteran population.
Okay. And I do a lot of. Maybe you should do alternating weeks, one in Condon, and one in Arlington, but that's just my thought. Um.
I could also do that, I didn't think of that.
Yeah, I just kinda thought of that, thought, oh, that might be a, because I think maybe Paul Conway did spend time, I don't know that but I think he might have gone to Arlington periodically anyway, um.
So he would share with Billy, or the?
Oh, it, it would be the front office that we already ran, is what, what he's proposing.
So we're not looking at additional?
No expense.
So I'd be sharing the same space with Nathan.
But on a day he's not there, cause Nathan is here on Thursdays.
We're the only two here.
Uh, right now.
Is it, so it's every Thursday that you normally come to Condon?
Yes, unless I have a home visit, they tend to sometimes plan on Thursdays, but more than likely, I'm in Condon every Thursday.
I actually think it would be beneficial to be, and, you know, go back every other week from Condon to Arlington.
Yeah, okay.
I, I wouldn't wanna see you move totally out of Condon.
Yeah.
I think that would put a hardship on some of the veterans.
Yeah. So, what do you think, Commissioner?
I'm, I'm good with it, we're using additional, we're using a resource we already have, um. Yeah, I think it's, it's a good bid.
Every other week, is that the, we have support for that? Yeah, okay. Um. Alright, did you have anything to add, Mister Aiken, uh, with that scenario?
No, actually, I like that scenario better.
Okay, good, I think that's gonna serve both communities, and then you can let people know that have a point, I mean, people are gonna uh, they're gonna have to be educated on your schedule, but, um, we also have our Facebook page, we have our website ways we can get the word out and help you, um, do that, so that the veterans know where you're gonna be and when.
Yeah, cause right now, in Arlington, I'm meeting at the fire department, so.
Oh, yeah, so, um court assistant said that she will, Anya said that if you provide her any information, she can post it, so, and help you with that outreach. So let's make the motion, um, if you're comfortable about supporting the, allowing him, um to alternate weeks between Arlington and Condon, and utilize the, um, Gillen County, uh, rented room at the Gronquist Building when he's in Arlington, sorry, on the fly.
Um.
Second it.
I'll move to, um so that Eric Aiken, is that right?
Yes.
Can alternate week to week between the courthouse and use the existing court. Rented Gronquist Building Office.
Alright. It's been moved and seconded to allow, I'm gonna reiterate, to allow a. The Veteran Service Officer to alternate Thursdays between Arlington and Condon and utilize the Gillum County. Uh leased room in the Gronquist Building when Veteran Services is in Arlington. Is there any discussion, uh motion, motion, sorry, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mister Aiken.
Thank you.
Alright, we have considered approval of Mortenson right-of-way application and Joel Jacober. Yes.
And this right-of-way uh application is Mortson for a permanent driveway off of Rattlesnake Road. Through by the roadmaster and the planning department, um they both both met with them previous to the last right-of-ways that they submitted. In our.
So it's a permanent driveway?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a map in there, I think it's off the existing building.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion about this?
Like question I had is, so like Stephanie signed off on it, but. There's a space here, all application will be reviewed by the planning department prior to approval, determine any land use issues exist. Just thought that should have maybe been checked, but she signed off on it, I guess. But that's the only question I have.
I can have her sign that before you.
Yes.
That was all I had.
Okay, um is there any further discussion? Commissioner Watkins, do you have anything? Okay, um. We should probably add in the motion with um planning permission um.
Signing. Okay.
Initial.
I move to approve the right-of-way for Mortons Construction as presented. With amended of having planning department uh check off. All applications will review by the planning department prior to approval.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the right-of-way with Mortons Construction. Um with an amendment on the application that the planning department um initial the approval. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, next on the agenda is consider reappointment of road committee members.
Only two member terms uh will be expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, which is trying to be headed in game. Cause we meet quarterly, Paul Barnett and Tim Jones wish to continue on the road committee and their letters um. Wishing to continue on that, just in your packet.
Okay.
We decided meeting on.
It's a night out.
So any discussion on that? From either commissioner?
I don't have any.
Their motion?
I've moved to approve the reappointments to the Gillum County Road Committee as presented. Tim Jones and Paul Barnett.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to re uh approve the reappointment of road committee members, Tim Jones and Paul Barnett, Paul Barnett. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, um last regular item on the agenda, consider approval of purchase agreement and bill of sale for Arden Mills. Okay, so Arden Mills took a little bit of study, because this is a twenty year, this is a twenty-year lease. On the, used to be IBR, now is Arden Mills. A large concrete building that is at the industrial park. Um, Gillum County owns the building and twenty years ago, in order to encourage uh industry to. Site in Gillum County, Gillum County uh incentivize that. They purchased the equipment, they got helped get the business going and built the building and then rented it to um the company. So there were two diff- two separate leases and the twenty-year lease, they they. Um ended the same time, but the twenty years ends the end of June. So, we have the property lease, which we've negotiated that, it's a shorter lease, they've agreed on that. The amount we talked about, the five percent increase on their current rent, um but it's a shorter lease, it's a five-year lease. But we're just talking about the equipment, so the the equipment lease, um let me just. Explain this to you, the equipment lease um. Is a completely separate lease, but how it was written twenty years ago was there's an option to purchase and. Make sure this is, yeah, so it says, in consideration of leasing leasing the above equipment and personal property. Lease or hereby grant to leasing an option to purchase the equipment and personal property for the original. Purchase price of the equipment and personal property as agreed to in the amendment, um less. The aggregate lease payments paid up to the exercise of the option, so they're exercising their option. And I checked with our treasurer to find out how much they paid and there, it's. It's a, it's a wash, they have paid um all of the lease payments, so basically, all of the lease payments went to the purchase of the equipment. They've exercised their um request to um. To, so a bill of sale was uh prepared by our legal counsel after review of that section of the lease. And this way, they own the equipment, they've already purchased it and they own it, so the action for today is the um. Approval of the purchase agreement and bill of sale with Arden Mills, so there'd be no money exchanged because they've. They paid for it all, and even though this is um a couple of months early, I did the math and there, it's. They paid all of the lease, it balances, so. Over a million dollars.
So this is just like a, kinda like a satisfaction.
Right. And if you have any questions, it was a little bit tricky to figure this out, how this was done, but um. They paid, let me see, the lease itself, they paid. Oh, fifty thousand four hundred dollars a year. So we're, we're not getting that payment anymore, the leave the property when we, when we approve that agreement is just on the building itself, so. You also have to realize that they paid for that, now they have twenty-year-old equipment, but. You know. Well, I took the tour and it looks like it's still working. Um, I don't have any problem with this, okay. Is there a, a one discussion or motion?
I moved to approve the purchase and sale agreement with Arden Mills for equipment and personal property as presented.
I will second the motion.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
I think the only thing I have is, is there a list of this stuff?
Yeah.
I have here it is, and it'll be an exhibit.
Yes. And they also have it, they provided it to me, so we agreed on that, all of it too, so. Sorry, we didn't include that. Second, did we second?
I thought I seconded, yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, okay, it's good. Um, let's see, the last thing on the agenda is announcements, next meeting, we have a budget committee meeting. And it is April fourteen, eight thirty AM, is that correct on time? Okay, Brooke's been working really hard on the budget and with Nathan's help and we've gone over it, gone over it, gone over it. And I think we're there, um so that's the next meeting, budget committee meeting, the regular meeting is the. Sixteenth, is it on here? Sorry.
I think so, yeah. Sixteenth for the court meeting, right?
Yeah.
I thought you said budget meeting, sorry, yeah, next.
Oh, we did the budget meeting, Brooke, we said April fourteen at eight thirty AM, correct?
Yep.
That's the budget committee meeting, regular meeting is that same week on the sixteenth in Arlington, April sixteenth, okay? And you're feeding me if you're getting me up and going that early, aren't you?
Yes.
We're feeding, Brooke's working on lunch, do you want breakfast too, we can do that. Okay, we'll get some donuts, okay, Brooklyn?
I can make.
For budget committing. Okay, um any, any announcements? Okay, any, you did your public health, about you?
I just, I have a career meeting four eleven and then um just a reminder, Norcore regular meeting and budget meeting on the fourth. Excuse me, seventeen, and that's County College, so.
Oh.
So I will, I will just elaborate a little bit more on the meeting that uh DeLeen and I had with the. The Tony. It's a big old long name, but um it, it was two hours and it was only on just the whip portion, so. It it's gonna be quite a job for going forward, but they. They, they don't really, they don't, they're not really understanding the whole county, county being the. Public health authority and then passing it off to the um South Gillum Health Center, so, but.
Is that the same way it's set up in Grant County, cause there's Grant County, but they include community counseling solutions, does it for Grant Counties? But so it has to be the county, I wonder if that would be a help to see how they.
Clintsey is the director of.
Okay. Just a, just a thought.
Yeah, well, and the difference before was they went, we were not the public health authority. North Central Public Health was, and we gave it to, but, so I just wondered if they went through the. Klein back and forth of funds, cause that is so awkward.
Yeah, you might check with Grant County and see.
Well, I I put, I put my complaint into the lady and told her that the O H J needs to figure out a better system. So, whether that goes anywhere, I don't know, probably not. But they basically were saying to, that they believe that we should take those funds and pass them directly through. But the problem is, is when you get the statements and say. We're taking back a hundred thousand, we're gonna put the county a hundred thousand in the hole until we can. Claw it back from South Gillum.
Yeah.
Health Center, and I don't think that's a good, so right now, the way it works is we. They, they are doing a quarterly report, and when they do that quarterly report, they request the funds from um. Brooklyn and Nathan to reimburse the, them for the stuff they've actually done, so they're only asking for. What they've actually done and the rest of the money is sitting in the county coffers.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a cumbersome process.
Yeah, so then when they do the audit, they come along and they go, well, we have the you, you know, I'm just gonna throw out a figure. We have that you got a hundred thousand. From us, which that would have went to the county, but we only took, they only took eighty of it, so they're like, where's the rest of the money? So, it's.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how to fix it or how then.
Right. Okay, important on it, okay.
Um, oh, and I had a, I had a CACO meeting, I think I sat through last week, so.
Okay, um, the SIP agreement we just did, um, the Port of Arlington's going to be signing off on that. Um their April meeting, and then we'll begin the um, the IGA process, which we've already started. We have to have an IGA with all the tax, taxing districts. Um that are going to benefit from the community service fee on that SIP agreement, so that's just the next step. And all of it gets sent to Business Oregon, and that repower project should start um probably in twenty seven. Um, Avangrid said, so it'll be quicker, I mean, I think we're gonna see a return on that. Agreement, you know, quicker than we would have complete construction, because it's a repower, so. That's coming today, I'm gonna meet with.
How long did it take the Shepherd's flat for me power all of there?
I don't know, what if.
I think it was about eight months.
Eight months? Big project, I don't know.
They had over like two hundred fifty people. Like two or three cranes, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then I'm gonna meet today with the solar side of Avangrid to, I, he just asked for a meeting, I don't know what he's. Gonna tell us about the um Oregon Trail Solar and see when that's going, when, when that's gonna start. So I'm assuming that's what he wants to talk about.
Well, it looks like they're setting up stuff in there, so.
Yeah.
I think they have till August.
Okay.
Or August or September, if I recall, to break ground.
Alright, I'm working on the budget, um, we, we just, the audit has just been completed, so that's good, the audit's done. It's kind of a process, so we're gonna finish an audit and then start the next year's audit very soon. Um, but it was because of transition, accounting program changes. Um transportation funding that has to have special audits, new auditors, there were a lot of factors that came into play there, but. They're to the point where I think maybe next meeting or maybe the following will have the audit ready for approval, but the issue is getting those actuals into the budget. We might not have them in there for this budget committee meeting, but it could be. I just told Brooklyn, don't, don't break your neck trying to do it, because the important thing is the. Right side of the budget, and we'll get it done before the budget's adopted, but um.
But did we sign, do we have a three-year contract with this? It should go faster next.
Yes, it'll go faster, it's always a learning process, and there's growing pains when you have a new auditor, cause you're learning about each other and. Different information, so um budget, Arden Mills, working on that, we, we have the new lease agreement prepared. It'll come to you for the next meeting, Brad had some, excuse me, Commissioner Wilkins had some questions about it. So I wanna make sure we get those asked before it comes before us, but it will be a, I believe a five-year agreement. With a five percent increase on their current rent, they agreed to that, so that's the building, the property rent. Um, and then the grain lab, um, I was told today that the county will put all that equipment on the surplus site. For advertisement, so um, that will be helpful. What we're doing, cause it's full of.
So all that.
It's full of equipment, yeah, and Arden Mills isn't interested in it, they were interested before and now they aren't, so um, there's an inventory list. But the inventory list, it's like when they walked away from that grain lab, they just walked away from it, it's like, there's papers and all kinds of stuff in there, so. There's an inventory list in there somewhere, if anybody out there and. Who might know where that list might be, we cannot find it here in the courthouse. Um, so, but we think the list is in the, there, in, in some of the documentation. So um Nathan, when he drives by, he, we gave him a key so he can get in there, because he'd be the one that would know where that would be if he remembers. Um then, once we get the, all that sold, link to advertise it on our website, uh you know, and all, all the ways that this is where you can go to purchase it. We also might do some outreach to some of the universities, Washington State, I don't know, I'm just thinking, OSU, I have no idea if they'd be interested. MCP might have some leads for us about how to.
I don't know that that, the. Northwestern Grain Guards is a done deal.
Okay.
So with MCP. Sounds like it might be iffy.
Is that the one from Lao? Was trying to do or something.
Northwestern Grain Guards, I know, I think they're a big, they're a big, all through the Northwest.
Um, so that takes care of the equipment and then the building, so we have the release of covenant from the federal government, but. In dealing with the federal government has been interesting, um so, um. We had a few conditions come back to us that we didn't understand, were conditions after the, after this is over, and they were. We, we need to let them know what the future use, what our plan is for a future use of the building, which there. Will be released on future use, but part of, of, of the requirements is we have to tell them what our proposed future uses. To rent it, yes, it's just simply to rent it, so we let them know that, the other two things are that it can't be used for religious purposes. And it can't be used for any form of, of any type of discrimination. The other two things are that it can't be used for religious purposes and it can't be used for any form of, of any type of discrimination, um federal. Federal regs say that, so um, we have to, um, then we, then it made us think, what else might. There be strings attached and there, our legal counsel said, no, that should be it, you shouldn't worry, that's, that's all. But the federal government won't talk to us right now until they, um. Did they say they want to send the covenant to their legal counsel before they'll talk to us?
For doing it and they have to provide their formal report before they'll.
Okay, then a formal report comes, but we can empty the building now, that's the part we can work on.
Get it ready.
Get it empty, get it clean, get it repaired and get it prepared for, for rent. So that's what we're doing there and that's been a big one, so.
Uh, they're gonna need like paint and stuff like that, I mean, is it?
I didn't think it looked that bad inside.
Like this painting?
Get it clean first and then see where we're at, there's a little bit of root repair that needs to be done, but there's also plenty of money in the industrial park fund for that. Um, housing, I have a meeting today in Arlington with the city of Arlington and this R three rural revitalization um. Project to um talk to them about some housing ideas, so um this. It, it's the same person, Nick Green, who worked with us on our fiber project. Um, that's part of R three and he, um, they have um private, public partnerships for infrastructure ideas, housing. Plans, um, pause that they can drop in, they did a subdivision in Burns and they said they have enough housing in Burns for twenty years.
Wow.
So they, they're in multiple rural counties, so I didn't think it hurt to talk to them, huh?
Or it's just flooded too.
Yes, it did.
I know, it sounds like they got sewage problems.
Terrible.
That's good.
Um, and then.
Trying not to, you know, downy port down there.
Yeah, we don't have problems, fiber, we were pre-approved for a fiber grant, for feed grant, it was a process, but we got through that. But we don't know what's going on with the federal government now, so I haven't heard. Anything adverse, the only thing I've heard is there could be some mix brought in of some. As opposed to the idea in the previous federal administration of everyone needs fiber regardless of. Where they are, there might be a mix of some other um technologies mixed in. There might be some modification is all of that I've heard, but we're just moving forward with those things, yeah, so. Okay, anything else? There being nor, no further business, this meeting is adjourned.